Madam Clerk, would you like to call a roll?
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Tran.
Here.
Councilmember Dovin.
Resident.
Councilmember Klumpenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen Pinalosa.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bridgeman.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. May I ask Ursula to do the invocation, followed by Councilmember Joe Dovin to lead us in the pledge.
Please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear God, Author of life, love and justice, we pray that you will guide us to cultivate and nurture the kind of city and world where everyone has opportunities to flourish and be their better selves, and to be part of a community where everyone benefits from the good intentions and selfless motivations on the decisions and actions that we take. Amen.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Please face our flag, handle the heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its essence, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as well.
Thank you, Councilmember. Alrighty, we will now briefly adjourn City Council and go over to Housing Authority. So I'll hand it over to Chair Bridgeman.
Okay. We do roll call. We will call the meeting to order and do roll call.
Commissioner Beckles.
Here.
Yeah, he's up here now.
Commissioner Dovin.
Resident.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Klumpenstein.
Here.
Commissioner T. Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Here.
Commissioner Tran.
Here.
Vice Chair Kim Nguyen Pinalosa.
Here.
And Chair Bridgeman.
Here.
Moving on to oral communications. Is there anyone here who would like to address the Garden Grove Housing Authority? CNN will close oral communications and move on to consent.
Move it.
Have a motion? Have a second, and we call for the vote.
Chair Bridgeman.
Oh, you have a...
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Tran.
Yes.
Commissioner Dovin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Klumpenstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Tan Nguyen.
Yes.
And Commissioner Nguyen Pinalosa.
Yes.
I think I got everyone? Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion received, nine yes votes.
Matters from Commissioners?
No.
No. Okay, CNN will close. We will adjourn the meeting of the Garden Grove Housing Authority. Next meeting will be November 28th, 2023. Back to the council.
Alrighty, thank you. We will reconvene City Council, go on to presentations. We have several items listed, so we'll go to 1A.
Item 1A is a community spotlight in recognition of employees celebrating 25-plus years of service with the City of Garden Grove, and City Manager Lisa Kim will read that community spotlight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council pays tribute to a distinguished group of individuals celebrating milestones with the City of Garden Grove, having dutifully served the community for 25, 30, and 40 years. Honories who are unable to be here tonight are the 25-year employees, including Terrence Chang, Louis Payan, Maria Stipe; our 30-year employees Alexis Santos, Hermilio Hernandez, and our 40-year employee Karen Frigosa. At this time, I would like to call for the honories and present and give a brief introduction. Please stay up front after being called so we can take a group photo afterwards. We'll start with our 25-year honoree, Rod Victoria. Rod began his career with the city in the Community Services Department as a Community Services Specialist in 1997. In 1999, he joined the Information Systems Division of the Controllers Department as a technician. Over the years, Rod has grown into the Information Technology Department and is currently working as the Senior Information Technology Technician, assisting city staff and the Garden Grove Police Department, and overseeing IT technicians, interns, and volunteers. Next, we have Gabriela Ocas Hernandez. If I can ask, Gabby, come forward. Gabby began her career with the city in the Community Services Department as a Community Services Specialist in 1997. Shortly after, she was promoted to Employment Specialist, then to Employment Supervisor for the One-Stop Shop. When the One-Stop Shop services ended, Gabby promoted to Assistant Community Service Supervisor to oversee the daily operations and programming in the Boyne and Clinton Neighborhood. In 2005, she was promoted to Administrative Analyst, and later to Senior Administrative Analyst/Senior Program Specialist. In 2018, Gabby ascended to Human Services Supervisor to oversee the H. Louis Blake Senior Center and two Family Resource Centers, the Boyne and Clinton Youth and Family Resource Center and the Magnolia Park Family Resource Center. Last but certainly not least, we have Pamela Hadat. Pam first joined the city in 1995 as a temporary employee to the Finance Department. When the City Council Liaison Position opened in 1997, Pam was hired to support the five Garden Grove City Council members during that time. To date, Pam has assisted four Garden Grove mayors and 21 Garden Grove City Council members with meetings, events, parades, schedules, and more. In 2003, Pam was promoted to Principal Office Assistant to also assist the Finance and Community Development Departments. At this time, the mayor and City Council would like to present each of these distinguished individuals with a memento in appreciation of their wonderful years of dedicated service to the City of Garden Grove, and the city is proud of their accomplishments and looks forward to many, many more years of service and success in their city careers.
Alrighty, 1B, BWOC program update.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. At this time, I would like to invite Kathryn Hammel, the Vice President of Mobile Operations for BWOC. In addition, Kevin Von Leff, the Director of Mobile Operations, will also join Kathryn in their presentation and update to the City Council this evening.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kim. I appreciate it. Good evening, Mayor, honorable members of council. Such a pleasure to meet you. For those of you that I have not had the pleasure to meet previously, I am Kathryn Hammel, the Vice President of Mobile Operations, as Lisa just mentioned. And as you know, we are here to provide an update, but I'd like to first introduce my colleague. So Mr. Kevin Von Leff, the Director of Mobile Operations, and then Mr. Tam Nguyen, he is our Garden Grove City Supervisor. We have provided mobile mental health services, and we have done so for the last two years. Earlier this month, we just celebrated our two-year anniversary of a partnership with your wonderful city, and I have a couple of statistics that I'd love to highlight for just a moment before I turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Nguyen. So through your visionary leadership and your support, we have been able to serve since October of 2021 7,689 persons impacted by mental health and substance use crises. We have transported over 955 persons into higher levels of care. Our teams right now have an average of a seven-minute response time, and we have provided well over 4,000 hours on scene handling calls, alleviating public safety, fire, and EMS, and diverting them to other calls for service. And with that, we are proud and honored to continue the work with your incredible organization, and we have had a couple of leadership changes that I do want to highlight briefly. We have a new CEO who will be beginning with our organization on October 30th, and his name is Mr. Philip Franks, and we are excited to continue under his leadership. And with that, if anyone doesn't have any questions, I'd love to turn it over to Tam, and he's going to share some success stories with our wonderful city. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathryn. All right. So I would like to share you a story. We'll call her Nancy to protect her privacy. Many years ago, Nancy was a victim of sexual assault and became addicted to drugs that cope with her trauma. Eventually, Child Protective Services took her children away from her, and she became unhoused in our city of Garden Grove. Two years ago, we started receiving dispatch calls for a welfare check on a 37-year-old woman, which was Nancy, who was a chronic caller of 911 with paranoid delusions and always asking about her children. Eventually, she trusted us enough to meet us in person, but initially, it was over the phone, and, you know, a lot of times, it was hang-ups and her asking to talk to a police officer, but we knew that that wasn't the best route for her. So when we met up with her in person, first, she declined a transport. The next time, she accepted the transport but declined to stay into our sobering center. The next time after that, she stayed in our sobering center but refused to go to our co-recurring residential program that would have kept her housed for 90 days as we treated her comorbidities of mental health and substance use, as well as give her a safe place to stay, good place, you know, free, healthy meals a day, and she declined that. So every time that she took two steps forward, she would take one step back. And she asked me one day, she was like, "Why are you so patient with us? Why are you so patient with me? Why are you always here for me when I'm always saying no?" Because, you know, I take that step forward, but I take that step back. And I told her, I know where she's coming from. When I went to Iraq and Afghanistan, you know, I fought my battles, and the only thing that helped me get through the toughest of times was knowing that the light at the end of the tunnel was being able to hold my family close to my arms and seeing my children again. And I know that if she battled through her battles, that that would be her end goal. And I'm happy to say now, she's sober, she's housed, and she's on a pathway to being a regular part of her children's life again. So I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for 1,000 successes like these over the last two years. The 4,000 hours that we have been with our clients have not been for nothing, because we have transported nearly 1,000 people, and this is just one snippet of what we have done over these last two years. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for everything you're doing. Alrighty, 1C, Orange County Grand Jury Membership Drive Update.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, I would like to invite former Councilmember Chris Beard to provide some highlight relating to the Orange County Grand Jury Membership Drive Update, and also introduce another speaker.
Good evening, everyone. How are you today?
Good sir.
Tonight. It's good to see you all, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the City Council. I am Chris Beard, longtime Garden Grove resident. It's a pleasure to be back and see all these smiling faces, and it's especially nice to be back today to congratulate Councilwoman Nguyen Pinalosa. Thank you. Congratulations, all of you, for your information. I am a current member of the Orange County Grand Jury, and don't be nervous. I'm here to promote the grand jury in that we are recruiting new members. It's an annual commitment, and you're aware of it, but I was hoping to reach out to your viewership to say this is the time, up until January 12th, to apply online to the OC Grand Jury if you want to be a grand jury member. And I'm also here tonight to introduce our foreperson, who will give some details on the grand jury. So in the future, any opportunity or any chance that you have to promote the grand jury, we're here to help local government. It's a very rewarding opportunity for a year's experience. It's one of the hardest jobs I ever loved, in addition to being a council member. And so I just encourage you to help promote it, and they're there for you. So again, it's a pleasure seeing you all. Now, I want to introduce our foreperson, Mike Verengena. And right now, he'll give you details on the grand jury. Thank you so much, and have a pleasant good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd also like to say hi to a good friend of mine from years past. Pete, good to see you here. My name is Michael Verengi. I'm the current foreperson of the Orange County Grand Jury. I also have another member back here, Mr. Steve Ballack, who is one of our members. What we're trying to get out there is more interest in serving on the grand jury. This last recruitment, there was only 142 people out of the entire county of, what, 3 million that applied for the grand jury. So if you're unfamiliar with the grand jury, the grand jury is basically set around the five supervisory districts in the county. So the final total out of the 30 members are spread across those five districts. Now, the names that are picked, it's literally by a random drawing out of a bingo hopper. Your name is put in there, they crank it, they reach in, pull a name out. The first 19 names are the sitting grand jury. The next 11 names are alternates in order. What we would like to do is get the word out a little bit more through cities. I have another presentation tomorrow evening in the Westminster City Chambers, which is where I live in Westminster. However, most of my growing up was here in Garden Grove. My family moved to Garden Grove from Los Angeles when I was 12, and other than the years I spent in the military and being out of the country, I've lived within the same mile and a half since 1961. So I'm a Garden Grove boy. I graduated from Pacifica. I served with Pete, the Garden Grove Police Department, for 30 years. So I have a lot of interest in this central Orange County area. The grand jury is made up of six committees. There's the City Committee, the County Committee, Special Interest Committee, Environment and Transportation, Health and Human Services, and the Special Interest and Ethics Committee. Those six committees are the ones that you will see write reports that are released during their term and also at the end of the year as a year-end report. If you go on ocgrandjury.org, you can literally pull up old reports that have been done by the previous grand juries, and I think it goes back about 15, 20 years. The things that the grand jury normally investigates, and the explanation is, they are the public's watchdog over the affairs of government. Primarily, that goes along with county government. However, there are certain aspects of city government, school districts, special districts, that the grand jury can look into. If you're familiar with the ongoing episode there in Anaheim, that stemmed out of a grand jury report from about two or three years ago. The Orange County Animal Care Reports, also that you've probably read in the newspapers, come from grand jury reports. There's all manner of things that you'll see in there. Some of them, you'll probably look at and go, gee, I didn't even think of that. Others have gotten a lot of publicity. What we really, really need to do is get the word out, hopefully, some of you in your districts. We have flyers back here. If you would like to post something on your personal City Council page, it would be very much appreciated. Our first report is probably due to hit maybe about April. That's if everything goes okay. They're the ones that are out ahead of everybody else, but it's somewhat of a slow process until it gets going, and then you realize, gosh, the clock's ticking, and it's going downhill faster and faster. I would also like to thank Mr. Bridgeman for passing along my email to those of you who run the city to allow me to come up here and allow my two fellow members to make this presentation at the grand jury. And surprisingly, George and I also share a little background. We just didn't know it at the time. We're both Coast Guard veterans. So semper paratus, George. Thank you very much. And if there's any questions, please feel free to ask if you're not quite sure what we do. I'll be more than happy. And for some of the folks out here in the audience also, we have flyers here. If there are any people that are interested that would like to look into this, the entire application can be done online. The website is set up at orangecounty, at ocgrandjury.org. So anybody interested can literally go on there. What they try to get is literally sort of a snapshot of the county, going all across all age groups, all ethnic groups. And in an ideal world, that works, but people have to apply for the grand jury. Otherwise, nobody's going to know that you're interested. Thank you very much for your time, and you folks have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, that takes us on to oral communications. I've got several cards, starting with Tony Buie.
Good evening. I'm Tony Buie, resident of Westminster and also a planning commissioner of Westminster, City of Westminster. I am honored to be here to attend your meeting, and I saw you have a full set of people, full of energy, and especially Stephen Jones. I met you many times at the outside picnic of the city. And George Brittingham, John O'Neil, Cindy Tran, met you many times already, and Joe Dovin. Glad to meet you here. Stephanie, I'm glad to meet you, and Kim Nguyen, and Mr. Tan Nguyen, he's not here, also all of you here. As a resident of Westminster, I really appreciate to be here because I saw all of you here has been working very hard to help the people of the Garden Grove, City of Garden Grove. And I had a chance to work in many engineering involved with the building department, and I appreciate all the staff of the building department who's working very hard to help all the project come through successfully for the residents of Westminster. So you all have to be proud that you have a great team, and the best thing is teamwork, and the spirit of teamwork is integrity, which is the aggregate to keep all of you together and working for the common cause of the city. And I hope that in the future, our City of Westminster will inherit, or at least learn a little bit from all of you here. And today, I appreciate all of the people of City of Garden Grove, and hopefully, in the future, Garden Grove and Westminster and many other cities around here will be together. It's a big city for Orange County, for all the people to enjoy, to grow, and be great for make America City great again. Thank you, and glad to be here. Best wish to all of you.
Thank you. Kyle Mason.
Good evening, everybody. I'm pretty sure you all know who I am. Mr. O'Neil, how you doing, sir? We have a fence problem. We need a fence. Could you guys please help and put a fence in for us? The Simpson Chevrolet over by the Social Security Building by the riverbed, you guys put a Band-Aid on the fence, but the Band-Aid fell off. The only thing you guys really did is put that Band-Aid on there, and it's helping the homeless and everybody get down into the riverbed. You know, just two blocks away is a beautiful square chain-linked fence. I've got pictures of everything, and I would love someone just to take a look at it. If you guys could just take and put, I think it's maybe 100 feet of fence, from the Simpson Chevrolet to the sidewalk, across the riverbed, and attach it to the Social Security, that'll stop 95 to almost 100%. I've even got pictures of Friday when all the police were there at Simpson Chevrolet. The homeless are getting smart. The people that deliver the cars there, they push the button about a half a block away so the gate opens up so they don't have to wait for the gate. The homeless move in. They hide. These guys put their cars away, they leave, close the gate. They're still in there. Boy, the alarm goes off all the time. It's nice. And then the people that are down in the riverbed screaming, "Give me my drugs," and just on and on and on. There's a lady named Raquel, and she has an office in the building right next to the riverbed. She happens to be the manager of the big apartment complex next door, and I've got recordings of people climbing down in there and stuff. She even says, "Why is this guy carrying a car jack down there? Do we have a garage down in the riverbed?" Do we have a garage down in the riverbed? You guys cleaned out three truckloads of stuff a while back, and it's been a while since anybody's been down there. I myself, I've never stolen anything before, but I finally did. If you guys want to arrest me, you can. I went to Walmart, and I stole a bicycle cable. I couldn't get the city or the county or anybody to come out to put anything on the fence. I've got pictures of it, too. The gate's wide open. Please? And then over off of Magnolia and Orangewood area, right there on the corner, is the other fence where the riverbed goes to. The county, I guess, came out and put a five-eighths chain-link fence. Believe it or not, it only stayed two weeks. I went by there yesterday, it's gone already. Please, can you guys put some fences in and take care of that? And like I said, you ought to see the recordings and the pictures we got, it's just unreal. Other than that, basically, Simpson Chevrolet's property looks nice. I'd like to get a job taking care of the property in the front, because ever since they put that nice, beautiful black fence in, nobody has cut the yard. There's bushes growing over the sidewalk and everything. Pay me a hundred bucks a month, I'll take care of it. I could use the money, and it would look great. Other than that, we've had a lot of graffiti in the neighborhood, but we've kept it down. But my main thing is the riverbed and the fencing. Please, you guys, could we put some new fencing in there? The Band-Aid you guys put on here, like I said, it's a joke.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Jones, members of the council. My name's Nicholas Dibbs, longtime resident of Garden Grove, teacher, educator. Like many of you, I care about the students and the young people. So I'm going to, dear Mayor Jones and members of the council, citizens of Garden Grove, tonight we have a major announcement. In a federal complaint filed today, Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, the attorneys general of thirty-three states, including California and New York, now that's two-thirds of the states of the United States, have, those attorney generals have all gotten together and filed a lawsuit today in the federal district court against Meta, Facebook, Instagram, and many other social media companies, which, for repeatedly misleading the public about the dangers of its platforms and knowingly inducing young children and teenagers into addictive and compulsive social media use. Social media and blue light is harming children and causing significant mental health issues and problems, including but not limited to screen time, social media and esports abuse and addiction, anxiety, depression, sleep deprivation, et cetera. Therefore, and as recommended by AB two seventy-two, we need the Garden Grove School District to be on board with the community, parents, students, administrators, and staff, to ban and block cell phones from being used during school time. Doing so will help reduce crime and reduce cyberbullying, et cetera. Now, the city council and city leaders must seriously consider empowering our community and parents to improve the quality of life and social media product safety to help parents guide and protect their children. The city council's annual resolution on mental health conveys that it takes all of us, takes a village, to help bring positive change. As announced briefly at the last council meeting, I am seeking volunteers to serve on a steering committee regarding the social media, cyberbullying, blue light, and other problems being caused by a lack of awareness of effective safety standards regarding screen time, cyberbullying, blue light, esports, and digital wellness and digital citizenship. Community members, parents, and council members and city staff who may be willing to serve on a steering committee to help bring awareness and solutions to protect children under existing California laws, AB two seventy-two, AB two-two-four-six, AB one-seven-six-seven, and AB two-eight-seven-nine, and others, are encouraged to contact me at the earliest convenience at nickdibs, N-I-C-K-D-I-B-S, the number one at gmail dot com. Therefore, tonight, I am requesting council members with police chief and staff support, if possible, to please put a fentanyl and social media risk awareness initiative on the council's agenda as soon as possible to provide resources and tools to help raise awareness regarding digital wellness and digital citizenship, good practices to better protect children and families. Go to dibsdigitalwellness.org. I'm out of my three minutes, but we need the, I've sent you all an email. You have the two hundred and sixty-six, some page, federal complaint filed today. Look it over, look over that email, and let's get something on the agenda soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the cards I have. Is there anyone else wishing to speak that did not submit a card?
Afternoon. I was here last week when we were discussing and ended up voting about the AB ten for ADUs and such, and I clearly don't have to review that. And I recognize there was some grumpiness from some of the council members about essentially being forced to allow the ADU situation. And I get it, you know, you guys have all won your elections. Elections have consequences. You're supposed to be up here voting your conscience and representing your constituency, and you're being forced to do something that you don't think is the right thing to do. That can't be easy, and I appreciate where you're at about that. But the city, from what I can tell, is completely fiscally irresponsible and is probably two billion dollars in debt in deferred maintenance. We need three hundred miles of brand-new sewer pipes. They're sixty years old. For the last sixty years, we've been spending maybe a quarter of a percent of the value of our infrastructure per year on maintenance, and that's nowhere near enough. It would be like buying a home in Garden Grove that has the original kitchen, the original bathroom, the original plumbing, the original electrical. You know, you can get by for a while doing that, but it's clear we're facing a fiscal cliff. I don't see the chief engineer here today. He seems like a great guy. I'm kind of doing his job today, on the other hand, and I'm probably not doing it well. But we're, like, it's impossible to overstate the magnitude of this problem that most every city in California is facing. And you can continue to ignore it, because we've done that for sixty years, and it's worked so far, and it'd be probably easy, because you hope that you can get through your administration, let somebody else worry about this problem. But, for instance, four years ago, the City of Carson experienced a massive health catastrophe when they had a sewage leak that affected not just Carson but the City of Long Beach. You can read about it. This is not a joke. We are in real serious trouble, billions of dollars. So I ask you guys to do a couple of things. First, please put this situation on the budget. At least admit we have a problem. It's a lot of money. We need to do something. And the reason I bring up the ADU thing from last week is because I believe the only way out of this is to grow the city and increase our population such that it increases our tax base. And the reason that matters is because the cost to run a city is primarily driven by the size of the footprint, not the population. And if we can grow our population, we'll increase tax base without really dramatically increasing the cost. We might be able to dig ourselves out of this. But if you guys think that this can continue by just increasing the cost of parking tickets, I mean, that's incredibly unethical and not going to work in the long run. We shouldn't be doing that nonsense. That's a regressive tax. Let's get a little bit more responsible. Our conservative members, I'm sure, appreciate fiscal responsibility. Our liberal members, I'm sure, appreciate affordable housing. You know, we can make this work, and if you guys, if the conservative members have a better plan, let's do that. But sitting here and doing nothing is not going to work.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on matters not listed on the agenda? All right, we will close oral communications and adjourn to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you call roll?
Member Breidigam?
Here.
Member Tran?
Here.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Klumpenstein?
Here.
Member Wynn Pinalosa?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neill?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. Okay, we already did oral communications, consent, calendar, just receive and file.
I'll move it. Second.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn over to sanitary district, and I'll hand it over to President O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time, we'll open up the Garden Grove Sanitary District Board of Directors meeting. If I could have the clerk please call the roll.
Member Breidigam?
Here.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Klumpenstein?
Here.
Member Wynn Pinalosa?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Vice President Tran?
Here.
And President O'Neill?
Here. Thank you very much. We've already held oral communications simultaneously with council. We do have three items on consent. These can all be voted on one motion, unless somebody likes to pull one. I have a motion to move it.
A second.
And a second. Let's call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from board members for the sanitary district? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and adjourn till the next meeting, which will be Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, in this room. Back to council.
Thank you, John. We'll reconvene city council. That takes us on to consent. It's recommended that three A through three K be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item.
I'll make the motion.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, items for consideration, we've got four listed. So we'll dive into four A.
Four A is approval to participate in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Office of Traffic Safety, OTS Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, or STEP, and the chief is here to give that report.
Mayor Jones, council members, good evening. The background is that the California Office of Traffic Safety Awards grants to local law enforcement agencies for enforcement and education purposes. The mission of OTS through Selective Traffic Enforcement Program is to effectively administer traffic safety grants, deliver innovative programs, and eliminate traffic fatalities and injuries on California roadways. This one-year grant begins October one, two thousand twenty-three, and ends September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Garden Grove PD has applied for and received similar grants dating back to nineteen ninety-six. The aims of the grant are to reduce fatalities, DUIs, and do this through strategic measures of DUI saturation controls, Know Your Limit campaigns, motorcycle safety, distracted driving enforcement, traffic safety education presentations, and traffic bicycle ped enforcement, along with many other measures taken on by the police department. The total amount of the grant will be three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. There is no requirement to hire additional personnel, and there are no out-of-pocket expenses. There is neither cost nor income to the city based upon participation in this grant. It is recommended that the city council authorize participation in the selective traffic enforcement program, accept the OTS grant funds in the amount of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, authorize the police chief, finance director, and finance manager to execute the grant agreement on behalf of the city, and allocate these grant monies to fund selective traffic enforcement operations. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, chief. Any questions, comments, or a motion?
Begging.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thanks, chief.
Item four B is to receive and file the twenty twenty-three Garden Grove Police Department Military Equipment Annual Report and introduce the first reading of an ordinance approving the military equipment use policy and rescinding ordinance number twenty-nine thirty-five. That ordinance is entitled, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, Adopting the Garden Grove Police Department Military Equipment Use Policy Pursuant to Government Code seventy-seventy-one and Rescinding Ordinance Number twenty-nine thirty-five. And again, the chief is here to give that report.
Thank you, Terry. The objective is for the city council to receive and file the twenty twenty-three Garden Grove PD Military Equipment Annual Report and introduce the ordinance adopting the military equipment use policy. Effective January one of two thousand twenty-two, California Assembly Bill four eighty-one added Chapter twelve point eight, commencing with Section seven zero seven zero to Division seven, title of the government code. These provisions required all law enforcement agencies to obtain approval from their respective governing bodies for adoption of military equipment use policy prior to use of any equipment defined by the government code as military equipment. Upon approval of the agency's military equipment use policy, the agency must thereafter prepare an annual military equipment use report, which must be published to the city's website, as well as hold at least one well-publicized and conveniently-located community engagement meeting, at which the general public may discuss and ask questions regarding the annual military equipment report and the law enforcement agency's funding, acquisition, and use of such military equipment. The annual report required by Assembly Bill four eighty-one must include a summary of each type of military equipment owned and used by the agency, its intended purposes, how each type of equipment was used by the agency in the preceding year, a summary of complaints received by the agency concerning the equipment, and the results of any internal audits pertaining to violations of the military equipment use policy, the total cost of each type of equipment, and the quantity possessed by the agency. In addition, it is required in the annual report that each agency's governing body to review any ordinances that have been approved that adopts the military equipment use policy, and to vote on whether to renew the ordinance. The governing body may choose whether to renew such ordinance, disapprove authorization for use of equipment where standards have not been met, or require modifications to the military equipment use policy based on whether the equipment detail with the annual report complies and meets the standards set forth in California Government Code, Section seven zero seven one subsection D. On June fourteen, twenty twenty-two, city council adopted ordinance twenty-nine thirty-five approving Garden Grove PD General Order two point two nine military equipment. A summary of how the military equipment was used and the purpose of its use, a summary of any complaints or concerns receiving that military equipment, the results of the internal audits, total annual cost of all the equipment and training associated with it, the quantity possessed for each type of military equipment, and if the law enforcement intends to purchase or acquire additional military equipment in the next year, the quantity sought for each type. A copy of the Garden Grove PD's annual military equipment use report for the period June twenty-two to September two thousand twenty-three is attached, and the annual report has been posted on the city's website and in accordance with provisions of Assembly Bill forty-one. The department will also publicize and conduct an engagement meeting regarding the department's use of military equipment at a date and time placed to be published when appropriate. On June fourteenth, the PD also identified General Order two point two nine with the policies, and we switched over to Lexipol. That policy number is identified as policy number seven zero six. Apart from that change in numbering and the update of specific military equipment and possession of the department for the relevant period, policy seven zero six is substantively the same as General Order two point two nine. However, because ordinance number two nine three five specifies approval of Garden Grove Police Department General Order two point two nine, an ordinance is required to be introduced and adopted to reflect policy number seven oh six pursuant to the government code seventy-seventy-one subsection C. In consideration of that ordinance approving a military equipment use policy must place as an agenda item for open session of a regular city council meeting, which provides an opportunity for public comment. Upon adoption, this ordinance will replace ordinance number two nine three five. The financial impact is minimal, associated with the posting of the military equipment use policy and the annual report on the department's website and publicizing and holding a required community engagement meeting. It is recommended that city council receive and file the Garden Grove Police Department Military Equipment Annual Report for two thousand twenty-three and introduce the ordinance adopting the military equipment use policy, rescinding ordinance number two nine three five. I'm open for any questions.
Yeah.
This time a little quicker, though.
Thanks, chief. Questions, comments, or a motion?
Comment. You know, very thorough report. Whoever did it this year did a really good job. He listed everything in there. Some of the funny things, you know, for the public that, you know, gets recommended, things that you don't necessarily consider military, like the mobile command post, right? It's basically an RV, right? So, you know, so obviously, they did a very thorough job on this, and command staff for their efforts, and I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Hold the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, four C.
Item four C is to authorize the appropriation of the encampment grant resolution funding round three look-back, ERF three L, and authorize the city manager to execute a m- Round 3 Lookback, ERF 3L, and authorize the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the County of Orange. And Ms. Lee is here to give that report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you is the Encampment Resolution Fund Program, also called ERF or Encampment Grant for short. The grant aims to provide funding support to local projects that provide supportive services for the unsheltered population residing in encampments with the ultimate goal of transitioning them into permanent housing. In February, the council adopted the resolution to approve the city's participation in the encampment grant and directed the city manager to execute the grant application and related agreements. The city made its first attempt to apply for the grant, requesting $3.4 million to fund the operations of the navigation center, count trans fencing improvement projects, street outreach, and supportive services at four major encampment sites: Beach Boulevard, Euclid, New Hope, and Hester. However, our application was not selected during this round. In June, the city resubmitted the grant application with the same scope as our first application, requesting $1,921,500 to support unsheltered populations specifically in Beach Boulevard encampment site. A grant application was supported by Senator Umberg, Senator Janet Nguyen, Caltrans, and the County of Orange. As you may have been made aware, the city was awarded the full requested grant amount, and the funding breakdown is included in your staff report. The grant will be administered over three fiscal years, starting from fiscal year 2024 to 2025 through fiscal years 2026 to 2027. The grant has no fiscal impact on the general fund. Following the council's support for the encampment grant application and given the grant being a vital component to the city's comprehensive strategic plan to address homelessness, staff recommends that the council authorize the finance director to appropriate the grant awarded amount not to exceed $1,921,500, authorize the city manager or her designees to execute an MOU between the county and the city, and make minor modifications as appropriate thereto, including the provision of $330,000 in funding on behalf of the city, and authorize the city manager or her designees to execute any agreements and amendments related to the grant or the MOU. This concludes my staff report. Staff are available for questions.
Thank you, Kristi. Any questions, comments, or a motion? Call to vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Alrighty, item 4D.
I believe item 4D has been polled.
Oh.
Tabled.
Okay. Then we will go on to ordinances presented for a second reading and adoption. Item 5A.
Item 5A is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2943 entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Zoning Map Amendment Number A 37 2023 to Revise the City's Official Zoning Map to Implement the Updates to the Adopted 2021-2029 Housing Element and to Clarify the Sites Intended to Be Included in the International West Mixed Use Overlay and the Industrial Residential Mixed Use 1 Overlay Pursuant to Ordinance Number 2925."
Any report or just second reading?
This is the second reading.
Yeah, got it.
The council held a public hearing at the last meeting.
Yep.
To introduce this ordinance.
Can I get a motion? Call to vote.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
George.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right, that takes us on to matters. We have no items listed, so we'll just go around the horn. George?
Sure. Real busy couple of weeks for everyone here in the council. You know, since the last meeting, the Korean Business Convention was held in Anaheim, a very big event there. We had the Asian-American, what do they call that?
Festival.
Festival going on, and then Silver Spoon Awards from the, we had the Elks put on fire and police officer law enforcement appreciation stuff. And lastly, this weekend, the Women's Club, the Garden Grove Women's Club, held their 100th anniversary. I don't know if they're the oldest service club in the city, but 100 years, that's quite an accomplishment. One thing I learned attending their celebration was that they accept men, too. There's a lot of men who are members of the Women's Club. So, and they do a lot of wonderful things for our community, and they have for 100 years.
102.
102 years, yeah. They were supposed to do it, but then COVID, so they had to delay their 100th anniversary until this year. So, anyway, very busy time for the council. It was great seeing everybody there. I know all of us were there, different events there and whatnot. So, with that being said, that's all I have.
Yep. Thanks, George. As he said, we were very, this council was very busy the last couple of weeks, running around at different events. It was very exciting and a very good time. I'll mention a couple of things that George hasn't mentioned. I was going to mention those, too, but the sustainability decathlon down in Orange County. They used to call it the solar decathlon. Well, that turned into the sustainability decathlon on energy-efficient homes, and all the colleges in the area build a home there and make it energy-efficient. Kind of interesting thing to go see. Hopefully, they can do it annually. It's been a few years since they did it. We did have, I know the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association, and I'm sure Stephanie will comment on it, had a water rate study night. So, anybody in the West Garden Grove area or actually in the whole city could have came out the other night and learned a lot about the water rate study and all that. Also, we did have a chamber mixer and a couple of new businesses over in West Garden Grove in the midst of all that other stuff that was going on. Pro Athletics had a ribbon cutting, and is it Taboon? Taboon Mediterranean Express opened over there where that fire was recently in West Garden Grove. So, that's kind of cool that they're opening new stuff over there. And then there was Arbor Day Tree Planning Ceremony at the Garden Grove Park, where the Public Works Department was really honored for all the work that they do, and they planted a tree, and a number of the schools got to come out, the Bolsa Grande, Jordan Intermediate, and Cook Elementary kids were all there to help shovel the dirt in. So, that was kind of cool. And then on the Women's Club thing is near to my heart because my mom is a former past president of multiple different years that she served on that, and I was telling the ladies there that, and gentlemen, Nick Tibbs, that, yeah, my parents' 40th wedding anniversary was in that hall, you know, in 1994. So, that was kind of cool. It's still there. It's really a cornerstone of Garden Grove, being 102 years old, and it literally is on the corner of Gilbert and Chapman. So, figuratively and literally, the Women's Club is a cornerstone, and I hope they can get some new members and keep that place rolling for another 100 years. That's all I got. Thanks.
Cindy.
Thank you. You already mentioned the past events, so I only have two quick items. First, about the homeless issue, I received three emails in the last couple of days related to homeless issue again. It seemed like when people send an email, they always say that we don't do anything. But as you could see today, we, the council, just voted for the city manager to execute a grant 1.9 mil to support this. And as a quick update, last meeting I mentioned about, there was a little small town hall with a resident at Mickey and Tras. Just want to say thank to our staff and SRT team. I talked to them yesterday, and they said they're big difference. After the team talked to the car dealer to cap the electric outlet so that they cannot use the electric, they had to charge their phone, and also put the password on the Wi-Fi, so now they cannot go there and get free Wi-Fi service. And they said a big difference. So, thanks to the staff and the team for doing that. The other email, I already forwarded them to our staff and city manager, so those emails will be taken care of soonly, really soon, because when people send emails, they say, oh, you don't do anything, or you don't answer, because we have to, you know, it takes time for us to contact Caltrans or different people just so that we could take some action. That's first. And second, this is just a quick kind of sharing story. Couple of days ago, I donated blood, and I passed out at a local, our local Garden Grove restaurant. And make a long story, no one helped. I was laying down there flat, and people just keep telling me, tell her to get out of the restaurant so we don't get liability about that. And I just, I couldn't move, and I didn't want a cup of water. So, my message here is that next time when you see someone, you know, lying flat or not moving, what, staying all over the place, and maybe, you know, try to help the person. If you don't want to help them, maybe call 911 or something. But that was it from me, sir.
Yes, thank you. So, I'm going to be brief, too. I just want to accent tonight's spotlight, which was at least two of the employees I know who got recognized, Pam, her dad, who works hard for us every day and keeps us all up to date. So, I appreciate her work very much. Also, Rodney, he has been here amazingly, what, 25 years? I remember working with his dad, Ding, if anybody remember Ding. I'm very fond of him. He was very helpful in the planning department, and now we have Rodney to count on. So, he's actually a second-generation employee of our city. So, that's really a shout-out to that family. We appreciate their work and all of the other employees who's shown us a lot of loyalty and being there for us. I say we always have to take care of the people, take care of us, and that's our staff. So, maybe we can have an Employee Recognition Day in Garden Grove if we want to entertain that. I would certainly want to put that on the books and just at least recognize everybody who's working for us regardless of how many years they put in. Secondly, last time I was here on this day, as we were talking about the World Korean Business Convention, and that has come to pass. So, we don't want to forget that. That was a big deal for me. I had two days of activities, including the opening. As you've seen, I think Mayor was there, and several of our members were there. We were treated to a lot of entertainment dances, and I was particularly impressed with the Taekwondo performance, and George and I was, we were on our feet, and I was getting ready to, you know, pull some punches, but, or at least run away as fast as I can, because those guys were good. They were really good. So, that was a big deal for me. And we made contacts with a lot of booths, and some of them are locals and friendlies of, you know, right here from Koreatown. Then some of them are all the way from LA or our neighboring city of Anaheim, but we got to meet and greet everyone, and it was kind of an extension of a Korea trip. So, I guess I was right. Now, what happens in Korea eventually comes back to Koreatown. All the good things, anyway, including a light show. So, I got some information that we might even entertain a drone light show. Who knows, right? So, we've got a lot of catching up to do with the smart cities in Korea. We're still working on that. Lastly, I want to mention that recently we've had some fake news about thefts and robberies and things around town, not just in Garden Grove but in Orange County, you know, our neighboring cities. And I want to thank our police chief, who was here tonight, and he has constantly put out press releases to update our citizens about what's real and what's not. So, we're not shaken, we're not otherwise caught flat-footed when certain things happen. So, I want our citizens to know that our police chief, police department, and the city council, as well as our mayor, is on top of everything. City manager Lisa is in contact with everybody and texts us all day long to update, so we don't get in a situation where we're not dealing with these. And most of it, I have to say, I did some research myself, is untrue. There's a lot of social media stuff that's just hyped up. So, we're fine here in Garden Grove, and we want to let everybody know that we are on top of it. And I also invite people from other cities. As you see, Mr. Tony Bowie, who's the chair of Planning Commission in Westminster, who's one of our friendly, he does a lot of work in our city, in Garden Grove, and they are part of Little Saigon here, and we want to have other people from other cities come to develop in our city, too, where we've got a lot of projects in the work, and we need all the support we can get. So, thank you to Mr. Tony Bowie and other people who will come and speak in our city, and we give them the three minutes like we give everybody else. Lastly, we have some sad news. A member, a family member of one of our staff has passed, and I just want to share in the grief and loss and keep them in our prayers. Thank you.
Stephanie.
Two quick things. On the vector control front, there's going to be some mosquito control applications starting tomorrow through this week in an area of my district, and I believe part of John O'Neill's district as well, as it borders Anaheim. This is being done due to just mosquito sample pools that are testing positive for West Nile virus. I know there's also an area in District 1 where some signs have been placed due to increased mosquito activity. Fortunately, these mosquitoes are year-round now. So, we used to just worry about a mosquito season, which was over the heat in the summertime, and now it's basically happening 365. So, this will be going on. If you got a door hanger, that means you're probably in the application zone. If you didn't, then you're not. If you need more information, you can go to ocvector.org. I also placed links and information to this on my council Facebook page as well. So, just a reminder, please keep wearing your repellent, check your screens, and dump and drain standing water. And then finally, Halloween is next Tuesday, and so this is just to remember. I know my daughter is excited about going trick-or-treating. It's just to remember to bring a flashlight, maybe some reflective tape on those costumes, and also, parents, just make sure you're checking that candy. I know we've had Senator Wen in here recently talking about the fentanyl crisis and how they're disguising fentanyl as candy and Skittles and so forth. So, just make sure that all the candy is wrapped and safe in those trick-or-treat buckets. Thank you.
Thank you. First, exciting news. Dia de los Muertos will be celebrated at Buena Clinton later this week. It is closed off in private to that community specifically. I am reminding and hopeful that staff will eventually plan a citywide Dia de los Muertos event, so Lisa had to add to your very long list of things that I continue to add. Please make sure that happens at some point in time. And even more exciting, finally, as George likes to call me the Grant Girl, my $6 million grant for Woodbury Park is finally getting to put to good use. We're having a community meeting to talk about the Woodbury Park revitalization on Thursday, November 2, at 5:00 PM at Woodbury Park. This is a 3.8-acre park that we're going to be discussing the use of the $6 million grant on how we want to improve the park. So, please make sure to attend if you live in that neighborhood. We want to hear from you specifically about this park revitalization project. Thank you. And that's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. There's just two upcoming events I wanted to note. Coming this Saturday, our Garden Grove Police Department is participating in the National Prescription Drug Take Back Day. So, it'll be held from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Garden Grove Police Department. So, we encourage our residents to bring your expired or unwanted medication to the Garden Grove Police Department for safe disposal. And also, at Atlantis Park on Saturday from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM is our Jekyll Lantern Jamboree. So, welcome all of our families to participate in that. So, thank you.
General counsel, I believe we have to go back into closed session for a couple more items, but is there anything else to say or report out?
Yes, Mayor. We did have two closed session items before the regular council meeting, and there's no report or action out of items two and three. And we do need to go back into closed session to discuss the last two items, which are items listed on the agendas four and five in the closed session agenda. So, we do need to adjourn to closed session.
All right. Thank you. With that, we will adjourn the City Council meeting, and council will retreat into closed session. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.